Recording start. All right, good evening, everyone. The work session of the Board of Trustees for the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Thursday until 5:00 PM. The time is now 6:42 PM. The time is now 6:42 PM. Trustees present are Trustee Adams, Trustee Correa, Trustee Durant, and Trustee Jensen. I'd like to ask everyone to turn off your cell phones or any electronic devices if you've not already done so. And at this time, I'll ask the Board Vice President and the Board Equity Committee Chair, Winford Adams Jr., to begin the meeting, reading our equity statement.
Thank you, Madam President. Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose, embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students, with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status, should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social-emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practices that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continued growth and development, and working to support the success of every student in all that we do.
Thank you, Trustee Adams. We're going to make a little bit of an adjustment in tonight's agenda, but I do need to open up for agenda participation. So, Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up for agenda participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. We will go ahead and continue with our Campus Improvement Plan presentation, and then we'll go back and pick up, once they're concluded, with the agenda from the beginning, if there's no objections from my colleagues. Dr. Jensen, ask your question.
And I want to be sure I'm pronouncing your name correctly. Is it Dunavent?
Dunavent.
Dunavent, okay, thank you. When I was looking at your campus improvement plan, I saw that you acknowledged the high mobility rate at your school and that you are looking at ways to quickly assess those kids so that they can go up to full speed and get what they need. Could you describe some of the ways you're going to be assessing kids who come into the school? Do you have some plans right now how to do that?
Currently, for our K through second grade students, the M-class assessment that I mentioned earlier, that benchmark assessment that we normally give in the beginning of the year, our teachers, they do have access to the assessment, so they're able to administer it right there on the spot. As these kids come in, when they have small group time, they can administer that test, and it gives us baseline data of where they are as it relates to reading. And then that data is what we will use to generate those lessons that we would need for those specific skills that are identified.
Teacher can administer that test and immediately get the results. Excellent, so you're not waiting for somebody else to come in with it. The other thing I was interested in was that you were looking at providing extra instruction beyond the regular school day. I know that we have different programs. Could you just briefly describe some of the things you have at BAML?
Sure. One of the programs that we have at BAML is the 21st Century Program. So, the 21st Century Program is an extension of the school day, and part of that program is an academic focus as well as an extracurricular focus. During our academic focus, again, they are aligning with the instruction that we give in the day. So, as we are implementing M-class interventions, they are doing the same thing in after-school program as well. Those identified skills for those targeted students, especially the students who sign up for the program, are getting those same lessons or an extension of the lesson in the after-school program.
Thank you. You can continue.
So, now we're going to pass it off to Ms. Kimberly Cully, Principal at Springwoods Village Middle School. Ms. Cully?
Thank you. Good evening, President Durant, School Board, Dr. Hina Hosa, and Cabinet. It is such a pleasure to come here tonight and visit with you to speak about Springwoods Village, our campus improvement plan, and the strategies that we have selected. You know, as we were considering our strategies with the goals we kept in the forefront of our mind, the implementation of your vision for us to be an international baccalaureate school. Thank you for the opportunity to carry out your vision. It means so much to me. So, let's back up. What is an IB school? So, an IB school, we focus on inquiry-based instruction. We plan our units, and they're conceptually driven, from PE to PVA, all of our PVA courses, to Individuals and Societies, also known as Social Studies, to Language Acquisition, Spanish, and Language and Literature, ELA. All of those units are planned conceptually. And then the third big pillar is that we teach our students to learn how to learn, and that is the approaches to learning skills. As a mom, that are the skills that I wish my own children would have learned in school. Now, there are five categories of approaches to learning skills that are super important. The reason that we feel they're important is because, you know, we should not be teaching students to be test takers. We should be preparing them for jobs and careers that don't even exist yet. And so, these approaches to learning skills are really the soft skills that everyone needs to be good citizens, to be good workers, to be good family members, to be good politicians. Everyone needs these. So, let's look at these five skills. The first one is communication. The second one that we teach is social. We look at research, self-management, and thinking. And under each of these skills, it's divided into categories, or clusters, under each category. And then, under each cluster, is 144 indicators of approaches to learning skills. I would like to review some of the approaches to learning skills that I think that you might find beneficial. Don't worry, I won't do all 144, but there are some good ones that I think you'll... I have them if you would like to dive deep. But some that I think you'll find beneficial are communication. That's one of the first ones that we teach. And under communication, giving and receiving meaningful feedback. How important is it for just our society in general, for husband and wives to be able to give and receive meaningful feedback, for politicians, vouchers, to give and receive meaningful feedback? Those pieces are important, that we teach our students those skills, also to negotiate knowledge and ideas with peers and with teachers. We teach our students that. We also teach our students to use a variety of speaking techniques with a variety of audiences. Under social, you'll see things like building consensus, how to manage and resolve conflicts, and how to work collaboratively in teams, how to listen actively to others' perspectives and ideas. Under thinking, you'll see things like evaluating evidence and arguments, identifying obstacles and challenges, formulating factual, topical, conceptual, and debatable questions. See, over time, as we both explicitly and implicitly teach these approaches to learning skills, our students should develop a clear understanding of how they learn best and what effective learning looks like. So, in our CIP, we realize that in order to prepare students, we must be proactive and not reactive. So, under our goals, under Goal 1, you're going to see our focus strategy number one is going to be focusing on Tier 1 instruction. Tier 1 instruction, intentionally and explicitly teaching learning how to learn, or the approaches to learning skills. So, I'd like to give you an example of how that looks, right? So, we all know, Social Studies, ooh, across the state, like, it's not good. It's not good. In a lot of that, there's just a lot of TEACs and pieces that go into why is that hard? And really, it really goes into critical thinking, right? So, as we plan our units and PLC, we come together as a team, and we start with our summative. And when you think of a summative assessment, I don't want you to think of a multiple choice test, because that's not what we do. Our summative assessment is a performance of understanding. So, here's an example from our Year 3, 8th grade, Individuals and Societies, Social Studies course, right? So, Year 3, the students are chief calligraphers. The king has assigned them to host the dinner party, and they are to place dignitaries, colonists, explorers around the table. They have to research and know who can and can't get along with each other, where am I going to sit somebody, what are their talking conversations going to be, who will have the same motivations and ideas? A lot of research to go in on who's going to be seated around the table. That's the ATL skill of research. The IB strand that they're graded on is thinking critically, specifically recognizing different perspectives and explaining their implications. That's thinking at the high level. So, Goal, under Goal 1, as you look down through our CIP, you're going to see, under Strategies 7 and 8, under Performance Objectives 1 through 4, you'll see us talk about our master squad. I can't take credit for the name. I totally stole it from Roberson. But what that is with the master squads is students that have already hit masters. And the ATL skill that we're working on with them is they're helping Year 1 and 2 students. So, our Year 3 students really working with Year 1 and 2 students and helping them increase their achievement. So, the ATL skill that they're working on is self-management and reflection. How can I share my skills to help peers who need more practice? And under social and collaboration, helping others to succeed. Under Goal 1, Performance Objective 5 and 6, you're going to see students taking ownership of their own learning. And what's interesting about this approach to learning skills is goal setting. But you know where goal setting starts? Actually, in PE, Fitness Program, all across Spring ISD, we teach goal setting. What we do is take it to the next level and say, "Goal setting doesn't stop there with give me one more push-up, one more sit-up, run a little faster." It really, we transfer that skills into content areas. So, students may learn goal setting in PE, but they're carried into the star-tested subjects. That ATL skill is self-management, organization. They set goals that are realistic and challenging, and also planning strategies and take action to achieve personal and academic goals. Implementing approaches to learning skills is not just something that's isolated to our learning coaches or teachers, as we call them. Also, our counselors are involved heavily in this. Our counselors provide social-emotional learning lessons and approach-to-learning lessons weekly to all students through collaborative lunch conversations, classroom lessons, and/or advocacy groups. Also, in Goal 4, what you're going to see is seven mindsets, and how well that program aligns with the ATL so well. So, what we've done in PE is take the seven mindsets lesson and map them out with the ATL lessons. It's a great marrying of the two. So, by focusing on approaches to learning from PE all the way through our core contents, students will again begin reflecting on their strengths and weaknesses, and we feel that the Campus Improvement Plan shows great alignment with the IB philosophy and the charge that you have given to our campus in preparing students to be lifelong learners and compassionate global citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Not a question, just a comment. I love the idea of the students helping the other students, because you learn just as much, if not more, when you're trying to teach someone else. So, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd agree. That's powerful. I did have sort of a question for clarity. So, one of the things we're trying to do is demystify education, and so, we're explaining acronyms that we use and terms of art that we use. You use the term Tier 1 instruction. Could you talk a bit about the distinction between Tier 1, Tier 2?
Absolutely. So, Tier 1 instruction, that's instruction for all students, general ed, special ed, everybody coming into the classroom. That's going to be the first level of instruction that they get. Think of whole group instruction coming in, and then even small groups, as we've broken into our classrooms. If I'm using math as an example, Mathia in the rotation is going to be for Tier 1 for all students. Tier 2 is when we start going into the multi-tier level support, formerly known as RTI, and that's going to students that need some more intervention.
Please define RTI.
Yes, sir. RTI was Response to Intervention. It's changed the name to Multi-Tier Support, yes. And so, we have trouble with acronyms too. Thank you for the assist. So, it's intervention, and so, it's a pull-out sort of intervention. Tier 3 is also intervention. It's more intensive, more frequent intervention that's provided. And then, we can go into if students need more assistance with special ed pull-outs resource, and we get to the whole different levels accompanying with that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I noticed in your Priority Problems statements, it was mostly about achievement scores on tests, but I know that you have quite a challenge in an IB program to have these wonderful IB program objectives, but you have to live in Texas, right? And you have to give Caesar what is Caesar's. And so, I just wondered, how do you meld the two, the IB with the testing you have to do?
Thank you for asking that. IB isn't what we teach, it's how we teach. And so, whether we're teaching in Texas or whether we're teaching in Switzerland, IB is the how. It's implementing, taking the what, our TEACs, and implementing that in the how, which is the inquiry-based instruction, conceptually driven. So, one of the things to our approaches to learning skills that we have to do, not have to do, that we get to do, is actually our program development plan under our IB. So, IB has a CIP that we do. So, a campus improvement plan is a program development plan, and so, we are focused on that with IB. So, it marries very well, because it's the how.
It sounds like a lot of your end-of-course work to demonstrate that you've learned is actually a project rather than, you know, a multiple choice test or whatever we're going to hear. So, do the kids still get the experience with multiple choice tests?
Yes, ma'am, they do. So, every district assessment that's given, we 100% take, and we track that data. I am very data-driven spreadsheet lover, and so, I, we, as a campus, keep track of everything so we can respond to the students' need and make sure that we're on track and on target with everyone else.
And part of your school motto, I don't know what it is, that you want your children, your students, to be world changers, right?
Yes, ma'am. I love that. Critical thinkers, world changers.
I love that, okay.
I have more generalized questions, so I'm going to wait until we get to the last presentation, and then I'll ask.
All right, you're in. All right, I would like to introduce Ms. Guidry, Principal of Spring Early College Academy.
Thank you, Ms. Cully. President Durant, Board of Trustees, Dr. Hina Hosa, and Cabinet. I'm Christine Guidry, Principal of Spring Early College. I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you, to be here tonight to discuss a high-leverage strategy that is helping us make an impact with student outcomes on our campus. I'd like to share a quote first before I talk to you about our strategy. Educator, researcher, and author Dr. Jakari Taylor shared, "Academic outcomes will not change until instruction changes. Instruction dictates student achievement. Not poverty, not culture, not race, not disability, not parent involvement, or any other factor. It's Tier 1 instruction." This really resonated with us at Spring Early College. We understand and value the strong foundational instruction that is important for students to be able to build upon as they move through our program into college courses. This is why we have implemented Avid school-wide for the last 12 years. It has helped us to deliver exemplary Tier 1 instruction to students, and you will see Avid embedded throughout our campus improvement plan. Avid is the advancement via individual determination. It's a college readiness program that really teaches students to become critical thinkers, to be able to also, while they're being successful academically, it's really learning the soft skills that sometimes halt students' progress. Organization, time management, the ability to prioritize and make decisions about how they're going to progress in their schoolwork and their coursework, teaching them how to study, how to collaborate with peers, how to read critically, how to understand and respond to Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 questions, our Level 1, 2, and 3. And while it prepares students in the high school setting for us, it prepares them for Lone Star College, it also prepares them to leave us and sit in any college classroom, to sit in any workspace, a career, military opportunity. It provides them really the skills that we would want to have in our life. And this is exhibited many times over when we have students come back to us at Alumni Day who come back for Career Day and say, "You know, I know I gave you grief during high school about Avid and the implementation of Avid, but if you do anything, make sure to hold on to it and enforce that on a daily basis." And more importantly than telling us, they will tell students that are sitting across from them, students who are in their seat right now, to say, "I sat where you are, and Avid was a lot. It pushed us, it stretched us, I grumbled about it, I wasn't, you know, always into it, but I didn't realize at that point just the impact that it has on my life now." And so, it's really important when they share those anecdotes that it helps affirm for us that Avid is helping to prepare our students, not only for school, high school, college, it's helping to prepare them for life. Every Spring Early College student is enrolled in an Avid elective class, grades 9 through 12. It's a college readiness program, and so, we transition through the skill set. So, in 9th grade, students come in, and they work on note-taking, organization, critical reading and writing. In 10th grade, it continues to build on the note-taking process, organizational skills, reading, writing, and collaboration between their peers. In 11th grade, we really start the college investigation. I don't know about you, but if you have sat with a student, helped them do an application for college, financial aid, it is an exercise in resilience, because it is very difficult. Learning to navigate the process and giving students the tools to be able to find the information themselves, not to just hand them information on a college they might be interested in, but teaching them how to search that. College is a business, and being able to leverage what colleges can give to students is important, because we have students who will have multiple opportunities to choose a college, and knowing where they're going to get the best education, the best academic support, the best financial support is important. And so, we really take that 11th grade year to start those investigations and really begin the conversations. They're continuing to build their resume that they started in 9th grade, working on interviews and interview questions. In 12th grade, we continue with the application process, breaking that down throughout the year, ensuring that students are submitting their applications, that they're submitting scholarships, that they are continuing to work on meeting the graduation requirements, having all of those things that come along with the application process. Getting into college is the first step. Transitioning into college and staying there is the real task, and so, really helping them to get into, you know, their housing, to choose where they're going to, you know, whether they're going to go to college, work, or the military. So, that's 11th and 12th grade is really some time for them to do some reflection and investigation within that. Through our Avid commitment, our focus on WICHER strategies and Tier 1 instruction is supported through WICHER, writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. That's where we live at Early College. That is the language that we speak on a regular basis. So, we ensure that all teachers have WICHER strategies embedded into their lesson plans on a daily basis. You might see writing and inquiry. You might see writing and organization. You would probably not see all five at one time, but they live in that 2 to 3 strategy area. One or more of those components would be evident in the classroom. You would see critical thinking skills, deepening classroom discussions, strengthening the collaborative work done between students. Organizational skills would include the use of student binders, so the legendary four-inch three-ring binders do live in existence at Spring Early College. You see the organization of time through planners and agendas. You see the organization of thought through their note-taking, graphic organizers, and reflections. We ensure this, the embedded WICHER strategies through WICHER rotations. Every content area, so we have, we divided our team into five teams, English, Math, Science, Social Studies, and Electives. So, five teams, W-I-C-O-R. And so, what we do is we have a calendar that ensures that every content area has a strategy assigned in a six-week timeframe. Doesn't mean that that's the only strategy that they are embedding into their instruction, but it means that they are focusing on that one and then capturing the evidence for it. In that capture of evidence, it helps us look to see, are we embedding the WICHER strategies at the level that we need them embedded? Are we asking the right level of questions? Are we supporting students in every area? It also helps us to capture the evidence to continue our Avid campus designation. And we're currently a site of distinction, and it is our, it's through the opportunity to ensure that all teachers are providing WICHER that we have made it our goal to be eligible for a demonstration site, a demonstration site designation, which is the highest level of designation for Avid campuses. With this consistent implementation of WICHER, we continue to see evidence in the growth of our scores. While we appreciate the growth of our STAR scores, we were really excited about the growth that we made in our emergent bilingual population this past year. We were able to reclassify 13 students, which was 23% of our population. If the new 23-24 reclassification were in existence at the end of last year, we would have actually been able to reclassify another 14 students, which would have been 27 or 50% of our EB population. So, that is our goal for this year, is to ensure that we are working to have at least 14 of our students reclassified, plus any student who is in, was in that area, the category of being close to reclassification. We truly believe that our implementation of Avid and WICHER strategies supports our Tier 1 instruction and increases our positive student outcomes. For this, I thank you for the opportunity to share this Avid journey with you and the impact that it has continued to make for our Spring Early College students.
Thank you. Any questions? I have a question. We're going to be looking at an agreement with Lone Star College today about sharing facilities, and I noticed on your Priority Problems, it was conventional instructional schedules lack the flexibility to meet the diverse acceleration intervention and enrichment needs of the student body. So, I assume this is a problem that's not going away, right? How do you cope with the different schedules? And also, that some kids are very accelerated and some need, you're calling the Level 1?
So, a couple of years ago, we implemented flex scheduling on our campus. And so, with flex scheduling, we called it our AIE period, Acceleration Intervention and Enrichment. And so, everybody has a flex class assigned to them, but it's based on their need for acceleration, which is tied to EOC or the House Bill 1416, our intervention, which is tied to TSI, and our acceleration, which we tie to SAT, PSAT, ACT prep. And so, students are assigned into those flex courses based on their needs. And so, we reassign those as we come up to that flex class period to ensure, so if we are, for example, tomorrow, we have our 9th graders testing. We've created a flex schedule, and so, our 10th and 11th and 12th grade teachers have created within that schedule needs that they need to address with students. So, it might be some PSAT prep for those students who are going to be taking the PSAT once we return from the fall break. We have some students who are, as we get closer to the end of the grading cycle, who need some additional support. And so, we And so we continue to identify those every time we have a flex day. We've implemented the flex schedule at the end of the day this year for Monday through Thursday, and then on Fridays, a couple of times a month, we'll have a flex Friday schedule that's very intentional and placing students where they, where the most need is.
So this isn't study hall, this isn't actually, the activities actually planned out.
Correct. And we do have.
Wherever the students are, you're there.
We do have some students, for example, seniors, who are primarily taking a college course schedule. That time for them might be collaborative study group. And so it might be the equivalent of a study hall because they might get together in their biology or math course, in their English course, and work together collaboratively to study for their college coursework.
It seems apparent that at that level in early college, high school, that the seniors very much have their own agenda that may be very tough.
So this is going to be a little long-winded. That's kind of why I was waiting to the end. So I noticed, okay, I'll start with this. The problem statements in all the CIPs, did they come from a list that you could kind of select, or do you just go and write out exactly what you thought the problem was? And I ask this because I noticed in all the different plans, I kept seeing the same repetitive statements. So I was curious about that part first. And this can be for everybody that's here, not just you.
Part of the needs assessment is as we go through, we look at a root cause analysis. So we start asking why? Why is this data? And we drill down to what we, as a campus, within our campus improvement committee, determine as the root cause of it. And so whatever the problem statement ended up being, it's the committee coming together and going, why did that happen? And why did that happen? Until we get to a layer that we say, yeah, we think this is the root cause. So I don't know if that, there's not a list. There's not a list at all that we pick through and choose from. It really is a collaborative process among every campus's committee.
And the reason that I asked that is because it, there's a consistent, the same four areas just kept popping up in all of our campuses. It was mental health concerns, attendance concerns, effective teachers, parental involvement, and student discipline. And that's the consistent, yeah, every single one, yes, okay. And so, so starting with attendance, do we, because I know you said we're trying to drill down, down to every data point and really try to figure out what's going on with our district. So what have we found is our biggest challenges with attendance? And I know it's going to vary from campus to campus because, you know, we're different, we look different in different parts of the campus. So in general, though, what do you think our biggest challenges are when it comes to attendance?
So from a data standpoint, when we're looking at attendance, I know that it depends on when you're looking at the apartment homes, when we take a consideration, Cypress Station, for instance, you have multi-generational apartment families living in those homes. And so recently, there was the movement of those multi-generational families from those apartment homes, which we took a hit with our enrollment. And then, of course, that's going to impact our attendance. And so we also think about some of our attendance as far as our students, depending upon variables that we can't control for, as far as like their parental involvement, things of that nature. But when we think about what our campuses and our campus leaders are doing, making calls, I remember hearing Principal Doucette over at Do-It, and her staff is actually calling after that magic attendance hour, and students are not coming. They're actually calling their students, hey, we noticed that this student did not come to school today, we want to know, is everything okay? Reaching out to these families. So I think that there, from a data standpoint, there are various contributing factors, looking at it on paper. But I know when we're looking at just the multi-generational families from some of our apartment homes, having that hit, and then just various things with our discipline, some of the other factors that you named, those are going to impact our attendance. And so what we're doing is actually triangulating the data, seeing how our discipline is impacting our attendance, and then how is that impacting our academic achievement for our students? So for research accountability and testing, we're actually triangulating that data to see the impact and the correlation between all of these data points.
That's good. Thank you. So effective teachers. And I have a concern with that because it seems like we have 10,001 different professional development classes, and it seems like every time you turn around, you've got 20 more that's being added. And so I'm concerned about the effectiveness of our PD because we keep seeing this coming up. Now, I know we have a teacher shortage, and I know we have younger teachers or less experienced teachers coming in, but it concerns me that one of the campuses, I noticed, one of the problem statements is that they had too many DOI on staff. And so the concern there is the professional development. Are our teachers getting the training, the thingy? Because that was something that I saw on almost every single campus. Somebody had at least one problem statement saying that the effective teachers was lacking. The other piece to that is, are we looking at, and I know it's probably not a very popular idea, but moving teachers around, you know, I know people find their home and they love it and they don't want to move. And I know that we were looking at the, what was the program that we had where we had like the master teachers helping? The opportunity culture, yes. So are we doing the opportunity culture within schools, or are we doing them across the schools? So do we have the master teacher in the one campus with those teachers, or do we have master teachers supporting other teachers in other campuses as well?
Before the team addresses, I'll address some of the recruitment issues and DOI teachers and the opportunity culture, because those follow under Human Resources Services. Good evening, trustees. With, we definitely, you know, my team, Human Resources team, we were actually looking at data today at our DOI teachers and realizing, you know, the impact of having DOI and the need for, one, those teachers to complete their coursework, their alternative certification programs, so that they do become highly qualified teachers, and that they, our kids then do have access to highly qualified teachers. So one of the things we're going to be looking at is, one, communicating with those employees to make sure that they're keeping track of their course of study if they're going to remain employed with us. And also, we're going to take a look at our recruitment plan, because one of the data pieces senior leadership team looked at last week was, we do have a large number of our new hires are brand new to the profession, either brand new teachers or DOI teachers. And so part of our recruitment plan is, we know that sweet spot for teaching is between five and 15 years, so increasing the number of teachers and then directing our recruitment efforts towards trying to increase that number. And so those are the two things that we are speaking, that we're working on right now. Our opportunity culture grant continues. Right now, those multi-classroom leaders work with teachers at the particular opportunity culture campuses because the REACH associates at those campuses then provide coverage for those MCLs then to go back and go out and impact other classrooms. And so those are things from the Human Resources Services standpoint that we're going to look at and what we're going to address so that the campuses do have, aren't struggling with that aspect.
How are we assessing the strength of our onboarding process? I know you said we have a lot of new teachers. How are we addressing the strength and the success of how we're onboarding?
As far as onboarding to the professional learning plan.
I'm talking about across the board.
And so that's one of the pieces of feedback we can gather from our new teachers. I think it'd be a very valuable piece of feedback to gather from new teachers as far as what are the supports they received in their first year? What are the things that they found beneficial? And what are the things that they found that could have been strengthened?
Correct. I'd be interested in seeing that data.
And I think there's a tie-in, President Durant, and also going back to Trustee Correa's question, we do offer a lot of professional learning. And one of the things that we have really been trying to strengthen too is expanding the level of differentiation. Even though we do have a lot of our DOI teachers and we do have a lot of first-year teachers ranging from one through five, we also do have a group of teachers that are also in that median level and that veteran level, you know, that have requested for a significant level of differentiation. So that we're not offering professional development that's cookie cutter across the boards. So we have really expanded our level of offerings and really doing a deep dive, you know, more into some of our offerings specifically around our content in our core areas through our professional learning. We also do survey our teachers, especially after our job-alike days, coaches' collaboratives, any opportunities that we have that we offer professional learning to our teachers. We do survey the quality of the sessions and any type of open feedback that they can provide to us so we can always continue to evolve to meet the needs of our teachers. But one of the things that we heard loud and clear at the end of last year especially was the need for a more differentiated approach, especially for some of our veteran and mid-level teachers that really required a more deep, intensive dive into the specific areas of learning.
That was one of our greatest opportunities. What was one of our biggest successes that you heard in that feedback from teachers? What did we get right?
Well, I think what we got right is, you know, we have a really good platform in place for how we do open the opportunities for teachers to engage, not only in professional development, but also, you know, all of our principals and our schools do a fantastic job at, you know, how we're implementing our professional learning communities across all of our campuses. And there, in those PLCs alone too, there's a lot of that, you know, job embedded professional development that's ongoing and occurring. But we are receiving a lot of positive feedback that I am prepared to share with the board as well. I think I've shared it with the board, actually, one of the board reports. But there is a lot of good overwhelming feedback that is positive regarding the number of offerings that we do offer, you know, to our teachers. And we do offer a lot, to Trustee Correa's point, everything ranging from, you know, positive behavior practices all the way to socio-emotional learning, everything to our core content, from, you know, even to our extracurricular. I mean, we offer almost something for everyone, even all of our different professional learning strands. We offer something for nurses in our job-alike days. We have opportunities for our peer professionals. So we do offer a myriad of offerings, but the feedback has been positive in terms of what's there. The piece that we continue to evolve in is making sure that we're meeting the needs of every strand of learner, because everyone does need something very prescribed and
Dr. Quayar, can you talk about, the big feedback that we got was the differentiation and how you are providing, the team is providing, the level one, the level two, and now up to level three on the, you know, whether it's reading, math, any of the core subjects? Because that's, that's why we have so many sessions, is because of that differentiation. So can you talk about the tiering of the professional development?
Absolutely. I mean, and based off, and a lot of this is also feedback from our teachers and our principals, you know, letting us know in terms of, you know, what is the intensity level that we need to provide that's very prescribed to their campus? Every campus needs something very different, and every teacher needs something very different. And so to Dr. Hinojosa's point, through multiple, you know, through multiple committees last year, whether it was the ACE Committee, whether it was through Jobalike, you know, whether it was even through our Summer Leadership Institute or our Teacher Institute, you know, we really take that feedback and we're very intentional to how we really created those different tiers. And Dr. Hinojosa's point, we do offer three different levels of training and professional development from the Professional Learning Department. And I know Dr. Lewis, you know, oversees the Professional Learning, the Office of Professional Learning, she's here in attendance, and she and the team, you know, have done a really, really good job at ensuring that there is that quality of access. Something I'm also very excited about too is really creating a central repository where we're going to start to have online access for our teachers to be able to have access to a myriad of professional development through video access, because we know not everything can be in person. And we want to make sure that all of our staff has access, you know, to these professional development offerings.
That kind of leads into my next question, when I was going to ask about participation. How, what's our participation level like?
I feel our participation level is really good in terms of our turnout to our physical, our physical professional developments. I do know that our principals do a very, very, very good job at ensuring that we maximize participation at all of our, you know, professional development opportunities. So thank you, principals. And I know that we utilize, you know, all of the vehicles and tools that we have available to make sure that we're actively recruiting, that we're sending out through SISD Now's, we're advertising through social media, multiple emails, and our principals advocating at the school level to make sure that we do maximize the participation. But I will say, part of that feedback that we have taken into account is being able to be a little more innovative also in our offerings and approaches, and being able to offer a digital component, you know, for that learner that might not be able to attend face-to-face.
Thank you.
At some point, Dr. Quayar, can you quantify that for us? Maybe not tonight, but what you just said is a little fuzzy to me.
Yes, sir.
And I need to be able to compare things, and so I'll need that quantified.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, so the challenge, I guess my challenge would be, is just to make sure that we're measuring that effectiveness, especially for the newer hires. And I would think, I'm sure you're already doing this, but to balance the hires that we have so that we don't have a bunch of brand-new teachers in one campus, because I see it in one of the CIPs already. So, so that's one. We talked about attendance. Parental involvement, I know that's kind of the ever-elusive unicorn that we're always chasing. But that was another one that came up quite often. And so you had mentioned when you were describing the different, the setup for, I guess, the different cycles and how you come to, you know, that you're part of the needs assessment, I think is what you're explaining. And you mentioned the parents being involved in that process? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
And so having been on the parent's side, you always end up having the same parents. And so my question is, do we have any sort of strategies to help target new voices and new faces and any way to bring in some of the other parents that maybe, you know, it's not the same two that always show up to everything you have? So that's one question or a challenge. You don't have to answer it necessarily. And then the other piece was, I think you answered this earlier, about adjustments to the implementation plans, you know, kind of how are they tracked and how are they checked? And how do we make sure that they're being implemented with fidelity? Because that's a whole nother issue. So would it be helpful to, I don't know if we're already doing this with our community engagement, would it be helpful if we had some sort of a targeted plan for each campus? Like each individual campus had some sort of a targeted plan for the parental involvement? Because I know we have the parent engagement liaisons, and then we have our PAC meetings, and we have, you know, again, it's those same people. So, but sometimes I feel like we're just kind of checking the box and then say, well, we've got our two parents, here's our paperwork, let's do, you know, and you go on down the road. But if we're going to get our parental involvement numbers up, I feel like we need to do something more than just kind of checking those boxes. So I don't know, thinking out of the box, I don't know if we need a more concerted effort to try to figure out way, other ways to bring, you know, parent voice into the campuses. And so more of the, another challenge, not necessarily an answer. Student discipline. So the student discipline, yeah, we all know we have issues there. So with the new student code of conduct, now this assessment is based on our needs from last year, is that right? So we have the new student code of conduct now. Are we seeing improvements based on the new code of conduct? Or are we still kind of in the same boat that we were before?
So in early data pools, looking, so I'm gonna talk from the data. You wanna, okay. So talking from the data side of things, so looking at the data and early look for us for the data pieces. So we are. So we are seeing, we looked at the correlation between our social emotional learning curriculum to see if that is impacting the number of our discipline infractions that we're seeing. So we're trying to see the correlation there. We're also looking at the number of infractions that we are seeing compared to 2022, 2023, with the 2023, 2024 school year, trying to determine the impact of our new student code of conduct. So we are, it's in the early phases, initial phases of implementation, of course. But we are definitely seeing that the implementation of the student code of conduct is working as far as identifying what those infractions are on the campuses and then also the consistency throughout the district. So that is what we're seeing from the data standpoint as we're going through and pulling the data for the campuses. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Kelly.
Okay. At the campus level, our campus, we have seen a decrease in like fighting, for sure. I think that the immediate consequence is helped with that. The couple hits that we have had have been with vaping. That's been something that immediate send. So that's something that has been a shock to our students. And so that we, I feel that our campus is definitely seeing an improvement in our discipline numbers because of the student code of conduct.
So is it fair to say that if we're consistently, if we are consistently enforcing our written student code of conduct? And to your point, it may be a shock to some of the students, but they get the message.
That's the way it appears for my campus. I can't speak for every campus, but for my campus, that's the impact that I'm seeing thus far.
Okay. And then, thank you. The mental health concerns. So I know we have our SEL curriculum. And I also know that there are some, well, I have been told that there are some fidelity issues with implementing the SEL. And we have some folks that just, maybe they just don't believe that, you know, five minutes a day is going to help make a change on a student's, you know, outlook for the rest of the day. Now I'm going to use that to lead into kind of this next little survey. And I would like, since we have all the principals here, I'm going to ask you to be brave, because I'm going to take, I'm going to ask a few questions here. And it's a little survey that I kind of, all the conferences that we go to, this isn't necessarily scientific, but what I have noticed with schools that have become success stories and they've turned their district around, they all tend to have about the same six traits. And so what I want to do is I want to ask your opinion on where you think our district is. And I'm doing this because if we don't, if we don't address and we don't talk in public about what's really going on, if we don't know where the issues are, we can't do anything about it. And part of that is being transparent. And so I want to just raise your hand if you agree with this statement. These are the six statements: data-centered, bottoms-up approach, wellness-integrated in schools for both staff and students, community involvement, real-world hands-on learning, and policies that support. And I just would like to take a survey. How many of you feel we are data-centered? I would say, me, I think we're pretty data-centered.
We're asking all of our, everybody.
Everybody, yeah. Okay.
As a data person, I would hope every hand is.
Right, exactly.
You can't turn around and look.
I did not.
A bottoms-up approach. Bottoms-up, meaning the focus is kind of on the students shifting out versus coming top-down. Okay. Wellness integrated into our schools for both the staff and the students. Do you feel we're doing a good job with that? Or do you feel like we could do better? I mean, we could always do better. But do you feel like we're okay? Or do we have a really long way to go before we're meeting that requirement?
It's a difficult question.
It's a very difficult question, yes.
So are you asking them to raise their hand if they feel it's okay or they feel it's not?
Yeah, do you feel like we have a long stretch to really get to where we need to go for wellness? Because we have, yeah. Fair enough. Again, I asked you to be brave because I know who's sitting in the room here with you. So I appreciate that. Do you feel we have good, real-world hands-on learning, just in general? Pretty good? Okay. And then do you feel like, and this is kind of the last one, and this is kind of where the board comes in. Do you feel like we have policies that really support what you're trying to do? Okay. I know that's hard. What I asked you to do was very hard and very brave, and I really appreciate that. But again, if we don't know where our failures are, it's hard for us to improve on those things. So I appreciate you being honest. I appreciate you answering those questions. And from the board's perspective, I would hope that we are doing everything we possibly can to support you in every way possible. So thank you so much for obliging me.
And Trustee Correa, I just did want to bring back to Ms. Ola Loy's initial slides where it showed the strategic plan. So what you were saying as you went through each of those campus improvement plans is that alignment to our strategic plan. So each of our strategic plan priorities has goals associated with it. So there's percentages increases that the district must achieve. And so each of the campuses have also gone within those priorities to make sure that they are also supporting the district's overall outcome to reach those goals. So when you saw a lot with like family, community as partners, student and parent engagement, that falls under that engagement strand. So that's, and the well-being was the same way. So that well-being strand, so that's the reason it's actually how we designed the campus improvement plans to be in alignment to the strategic plan.
Got it. Thank you for that. Trustee Adams?
So this is just a bit of commentary on something I observed in the CIPs. So this past weekend, we all went to Tascatasas, and there was a keynote speaker named Ken Williams. And he talked about the paradigm in public education is approaching our challenges with the kids, like starting with our clients instead of looking at our talent, right? And so one of the things I noticed about the campus improvement program plans is the first section of all of them, actually, I did find an exception, but almost all of them start with the demographics of our students, which in Mr. Williams's perspective is backwards. And so I want to sort of challenge the room to begin to think about the answers to our challenges by looking at our talent, by looking at the people that we're putting in front of the kids. Ms. Guidry and Ms. Kelly talked about the rigor of their instruction and how important the quality of instruction is. We just finished talking about our professional development. I think the key ingredient for all of our campus improvement programs is improving the quality of the instruction, improving the rigor of the instruction, not whether the kid is high mobility or African-American or special needs. To stop, look, it's an important factor, but I don't think, I agree with Mr. Williams that that shouldn't be the first thing we look at when we're trying to diagnose our issues. And I know this form is something that you all are required to fill in by the state and it's sort of set that way. But we can still change our mindset and paradigm in terms of the way we approach it. That was my only comment. I appreciate the hard work that I saw went into these, so thank you.
May I respond, Trustee Adams? So we were stating earlier about Plan for Learning, and it is an electronic platform that the majority of campuses, districts across the state have adopted. And so entering the demographics is a part of that platform. But one of the things we talked about earlier was the growth mindset here in Spring ISD. And so when we're talking about continuous improvement, something that we are embracing is that it is about adult behaviors and how we need to change adult behaviors to impact our teaching and for our students. So we wanted to ensure that that message was clear in our campus improvement. And one of the common threads that we hope that came out through the principal reflections today as well as in the campus improvement is that something that we are focused on is tier-one instruction and truly looking at adult behavior. Because we do understand that in order to improve positive outcomes for our students, we first have to look at ourselves and making sure that if there is something that we need to change, that is what needs to be done for our students. So we do, I just, we wanted to clarify that. Absolutely.
Okay, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. I know you guys have long days that start very early. And having to be here this evening is a challenge. I believe wholeheartedly that our principals are the backbone of this district. And it's important to not myself, but this team of eight, that you have the autonomy to do what you need to do, to run your campuses and make sure that you're meeting the needs of our students, because that's why we are, we're all here. You know, the cookie cutter approach doesn't work. We want you to be able to have the autonomy to do what you need to do to support what's happening on your campuses. And we're hoping that that's reflected in how this board responds and governs and that you feel supported and that you have the autonomy that you need. If that's not happening, then Dr. Hinojosa needs to let us know how we can address it. But I just wanted to make that statement and thank you for being here this evening. And thank you for all the hard work that you're doing. Enjoy next week. I think everybody's at a point where we need a little bit of a break. So I don't want to keep you any longer than we have to. Okay, they like the break part. But I'd just like to say thank you. Do you all want to take a five-minute break? Okay, then we're going to take a five-minute break from the meeting. She'll get the. We're going to reconvene tonight and we're going to start off with Dr. Harris.
Good evening, super proud superintendent, Dr. Hinojosa, President Durant, and the members of the board. One of the things that I just wanted to share a little bit about professional development, every professional development session that we have, we survey the teachers and we ask about the effectiveness of the professional development. We make adjustments along the way. What we've also heard from the teachers is the differentiation that's really important. Teachers who have springway systems and routines every year, they want the differentiation. So what we've done is collaborated with multiple departments and we've identified which sets of springway systems and routines should be in Level 1, like foundational, Level 2, Level 3, and we've differentiated. So the teachers, whether they've been in spring for 10 years or they are a new teacher to Spring ISD, they're able to get what they need. Something else that we have implemented in the Office of Professional Learning is mentor teachers. So every teacher, when they're hired, not only do they go to onboarding and we make sure they have springway systems and routine, but curriculum professional development, we also assign them a mentor. And so their mentor is on-campus with them, able to help them, plan with them, model in their classroom, internalize the lessons, they're with them in PLCs. So it's ongoing support. So we want to, you know, make sure that we provide professional development. And we know that when we pull them off-campus and we take them to a training or we provide a training for them, it's important to keep that ongoing support for them. Something else that we're also doing is pushing on campuses. So we have a campus support plan and we're pushing into campuses. We have our specialists, they're going to the DOI teachers. We know we have a lot of DOI teachers, but we have a plan to support them, not only provide professional development, but then to push on-campus to be in the work with them, to review curriculum, to internalize those lessons, to help them create lesson plans, to make sure they're embedding those lessons, they're in PLCs, they're leading PLCs, they're modeling lessons for them. Because we know that if you provide a training and you're away from campus, that's one way to teach, but also to support on-campus is really important. So we provide that as well.
Thank you so much. Any more questions?
Just Dr. Harris, like you did this summer in August and you prepared a report of all the participants, the results of the survey, if you'll do it again, if we can, for this weekend's superintendent's board updates, if not next week, and then we'll compile all that and send it out to the board.
We definitely will do that because we have that data and we will make sure we put it in a superintendent board update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to rewind to the back of tonight's agenda, so. Fast forward, okay. So the first, well, the next item to review is the minutes from previous meetings. Do any trustees have any changes or corrections to the minutes from the September 7th work session, the September 9th special call session, or the September 12th regular meeting? Hearing none, these items will be submitted as part of the consent agenda at the October 17th Board of Trustees' regular meeting. Our next item is our superintendent remarks. And so at this time, I'd like to recognize our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Lapita Hinojosa.
Thank you, Mr. Ant, and thank you for going back. You all know I love this part. First and foremost, and I know our principals, you know, are already on their way back home because they'll be back in their buildings at 6:30 in the morning. So definitely, once again, you know, just want to thank them for their hard work and their support. And like you see, Mr. Adams, you know, we have to do a lot to satisfy the requirements of the state. But most importantly, and I'm so glad Ms. Correa picked up that everyone had the same items, that tells us that they are in alignment with our North Star goal. And if you all remember our umbrella and how it starts with the North Star goal and our vision and then the strategic priorities. And so the expectation is that through the campus improvement plans, they are meeting their part of the priorities. So ultimately, as a district, we'll achieve that. So I was glad that you saw that, you caught it, and that the principals are doing their part. So just super excited and just proud. Also, another piece for the board that's here, last month, on September 12th, at that board meeting, we approved, or the board, I say we, I recommend it to you all, and you all approved the appointment of our Assistant Superintendent of Talent Acquisition, Development, and Engagement. Did I get it right? And so I wanted you to meet him because he is here tonight, Dr. Alejandro Gonzalez. Dr. Gonzalez, come on up here. They read your resume and all of that, but we can turn on a mic and just, I know you've been working, how many days have you been here now? You're an oldie.
Two plus eight, eight days.
Eight days, there you go. But just, just two seconds, quick introduction to the board so they get to know you.
Sure, and I'd like to thank you all. It's, it was very impactful when I received my first email from Dr. Hinojosa when she said, welcome home. I am not born and raised in spring, but just the warm welcome that I have received. I have been in education for over 24 years, started off as a teacher aide, worked my way up to classroom teacher, intern, assistant principal, assistant principal, principal, HR, senior manager, director, and now Assistant Superintendent. And so I've just been really amazed at the reception that I've received since I've been here these first few days. Really excited about getting into the work with our chief and with Dr. Hinojosa, believing the goals that you all have set forth and I'm ready to just dive into it and make an impact. Our charge is to recruit and bring in the best talent that we can. I told Dr. Hinojosa and I told the chief that one of my goals is to make this a premier district of choice for teachers, for educators, anybody that is looking to get into education. This should be a district of choice for them. They should want to come to Spring because of what we do to help grow our people from within. And so I'm really excited to get into the work.
Welcome and thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. And later on today or tonight, you will have the opportunity to consider the resolution of declaring October the 11th, which we won't be here, it's next week, but October the 11th as Spring ISD Human Resources Day. And I know we have a lot of our human resources staff that's here, so if you all will stand and be recognized. So we, we congratulate you and this will be our official first time ever that we are having this type of day to recognize the work that you all are doing. So thank you. Thank you for all that you do.
And Dr. Hinojosa, we did have a larger group here, but some of them had to get back to their families. But I would like to introduce to the board because they don't get to often see these members who are behind the scenes of our team. We have Gail Hemmings, who is Executive Secretary to the Assistant Superintendent for Talent Acquisition and Engagement, Rhonda Montgomery, our Certification Specialist. You can stand.
Hi, Rhonda.
Tiffany Weston, our Director of Teacher Pipelines, Juan Santos, our Director of Talent Acquisition, Christopher Carter, who was on his second day with Human Resource Services. He is our new Employee Relations Coordinator and he is a proud graduate of Westfield High School.
He had to leave?
Oh, yeah. I can't see them. Pearl Ivory, our Director of Opportunity Culture, I mean, our Organizational Culture, Chevelle Polk, our DOI Coordinator, Dr. Gonzalez, our new Assistant Superintendent, and Unika Smith, my executive assistant, and then Aurora Ortiz, our Compensation Coordinator.
All right. Welcome. We're glad to see you here this evening and we want to thank you for all your hard work. It's been a, ever since the pandemic, it's been an increase in the volume and the number of applications and new hires and changes that were happening, that have been happening. And we want to thank you for being able to stick with us through those changes.
So I also just really quickly, and I know I saw Mr. Adams on, on our Monday night, we held our annual College Day, College Night, and we rotated from school to school, from high school to high school. Last year it was at Winchee and it was big. This year it was at Westfield and it was even bigger. We had so many colleges, universities, and partners that were there. And of course, the, the families and the children that came out. And one of the things that I want to point out and that I was very proud of and that we've been working very intentionally on is providing resources for the families, the children with, with disabilities. And we've got to think about what is in store for them next. So not only colleges and universities that provide support for children or young people with disabilities, but also the Texas Workforce Commission Transition Services. When you walked into Westfield and you looked on the stage, we must have had 20, 30 different organizations there and a lot of parents that came to take advantage of that. So it's making sure that we're serving all of our students and that there is a place for them. And I, I loved what Ms. Cully was talking about with her vision for the, her school, talking about world changers, right? And that's what, what we need to be able to think about, preparing our students for what we don't even know is out there waiting for them. So just super proud and our college access coordinators coordinated that. This time, Dr. Thompson at Westfield was the lead. Everybody helped, but she was the lead. So it was, it was amazing. And you all know, in two weeks, we all are going to be golfing. We haven't practiced in a year, Ms. Westbrooks. You and I have to get back out there. October 23rd, it's a Monday and it's our annual Spring ISD Education Foundation Golf Tournament. And of course, as you know, it's at the North Gate Country Club and this is an opportunity for us to continue, for the Education Foundation to continue to raise funds for student scholarships, but most importantly, for teacher grants. We know that inflation is high. We know our teachers are spending their money. I see Mr. Alexander back there, one of our amazing specialists now, but former teacher, social studies teacher out at Robertson, working on his doctorate degree. So welcome you being here. But as we talk about teachers and what they have to do, there's a lot of expense. And so our Education Foundation, I know Dr. Jensen serves on the, on the board as well as Ms. Newhouse is, you know, raising funds for our teachers. And so lots of opportunities. There's a contest for the longest drive, closest to the pin, and a hole-in-one competition with a $10,000 cash prize. But I think Ms. Westbrooks and I are taking that prize, right? We're going to get it. But just go to our Education Foundation website, www.springisdfoundation.org to learn more about it. And then last but not least, our board in, in a little while will be also approving the resolution for Spring ISD to also participate because today is World Teachers Day, like not just regular, but the world is celebrating our teachers. And in Spring ISD, we want to celebrate our teachers and how special they are and what they do every single day. And we know, I think we heard several of our principals talk about, you know, first time instruction, small group instruction, all of that is on our teachers. And so we want to appreciate them and let them know our deep gratitude for what they do every single day. So those are my comments. And remember, we got a game tomorrow night, Westfield against Nimitz. And I know Mr. Lade was here earlier, our associate principal out there. He says it's in the bag. So Mr. Adams, we'll see you there and should be in the bag. Oh, wait, are we recording this?
Thank you, Dr. Hinojosa. Our next item, I'd like to, for our next item, I'd like to. Cover all of those in your updates. Yeah. Are we going to do the motion tonight for those resolutions? Okay. So at this time, I would like to entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution proclaiming October 5th, today, 2023, to be Spring ISD World Teacher Day.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution proclaiming October 5th, 2023 to be Spring ISD Teachers Day.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Jensen and seconded by Trustee Correa that the board adopt the resolution proclaiming October 5th, 2023 to be the Spring ISD World Teachers Day. Is there any discussion?
Are we going to read the resolution aloud?
Yes. Could you read that for us, Trustee Adams?
I have kind of a front. All right. Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District, Spring ISD Teachers Day Resolution. Whereas the Spring Independent School District future strength depends on providing a high quality education to all students, and whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students, and whereas our Spring ISD teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability, and creativity, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community, and whereas hashtag Teachers Can is a statewide movement supported by more than 150 partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of teachers, now therefore be it resolved that the Spring Independent School District Board of Trustees joins hashtag Teachers Can and its partnering entities across Texas and celebrating World Teachers Day and proclaims October 5th, 2023 to be Spring ISD Teachers Day. And be it further resolved that the Spring Independent School District Board of Trustees encourages members of our community to personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a light blue ribbon, ribbon outside your homes or businesses the week of October 5th as a symbol of support for educated educators. Adopted this 5th day of October 2023.
Thank you for that, Trustee Adams. Any other comment or discussion? I'd just like to comment that learning happens between that teacher and that student. That's where it happens. That's where the difference is made. And recognizing and joining in this world day of appreciation, I'm excited to be a part of that with my colleagues. And so with that, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item, I'd like to recor-, oh, yeah, let's not go so fast behind that, right? Okay, how are we going to communicate that out?
So actually, all the campuses, you'll look on social media, all the campuses have been celebrating. Lots of treats have been sent out for the teachers. And so they've been posting on their social media and sharing it with everyone that walks in. And we too have been sharing that on our, our social media channels as well.
We'd like to include something from the board out there as well. Thank you. All right. So for our next item, I'd like to recognize our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Lapita Hinojosa.
Thank you, Mr. Ant. And I know we talked a little bit about it. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. King, our Chief of Human Resources Services, and it is our resolution.
Yes, good evening, Bob.
Good evening, President Durant, members of the Board of Trustees, our super proud Superintendent, Dr. Hinojosa, Senior Leadership Team, and guests. It's my privilege to bring this resolution to you for your consideration tonight. Governor Greg Abbott has proclaimed 11, October 11th, 2023 as Texas Education Human Resources Day, a day set aside to recognize and honor the important contributions made by school staff who work in human resources. Human resources staff work hard each day to make sure our schools are staffed with high-quality employees and that those employees have a good work environment. The Texas Association of School Boards Human Resource Services has created the hashtag #CelebrateTXHR to promote the celebration of this day in social media. And so you, the resolution is included in your packet and we ask for your hearty approval tonight.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution proclaiming October 11th, 2023 to be Spring ISD Human Resources Day.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Correa and seconded by Trustee Adams that the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution proclaiming October 11th to be the Spring ISD Human Resource Day. Do we have any conversation? Would we like to read, Dr. Jensen, would you like to read the resolution for us?
Thank you. I'd be honored to read this. Whereas the Office of Human Resource Services is instrumental in recruiting, selecting, resourcing, and retaining quality staff in support of providing an excellent education for all students. And whereas Human Resource Services plays a key role in fostering satisfaction and loyalty among employees by allowing for professional growth and development and keeping employees informed about policies, working conditions, compensation, and benefits. And whereas Human Resource Services monitors and manages current and future workforce trends, organizational, organizational culture, legal and legislative trends, and ethical and social responsibility. And whereas Human Resource Services is an important part of district leadership and is vital to the overall productivity and efficiency of the district's workforce. And whereas Human Resource Services is a valued and respected department that sustains the district's most important asset, its people. Therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Spring School District does hereby resolve that October 11th, 2023 will be observed as Texas Education Human Resources Day throughout the district. The Board also encourages students, staff, and parents to express their appreciation to our Human Resources Team members for their dedication and commitment to Spring ISD employees and students. Adopted this 11th day of October 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jensen. Thank you to our HR staff that's present this evening. Is there any other discussion or comments before we vote? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. All right. So for 11th. We now have our Human Resource Day. Thank you for being here. Safe travels.
Mr. Ant, just one of the items that I forgot to mention is Monday, my comments Monday, and we all celebrated it across the district, was our, we celebrated National Custodian Appreciation Day on Monday. And so just very proud of the work and the service that our custodians do, you know, throughout our entire district. But most importantly, you know, they take care of our buildings. They make sure that our children are taken care of. And I know we celebrated it on Monday, but just wanted to make sure that we recognized it. I know you all already did, but just wanted to make sure and put it out there too.
And what they do is critical to the safety of our kids. They keep our buildings in the condition that keeps us safe. Thank you, Dr. Hinojosa. Our next item I'd like.
Just wanted to mention that I've visited a lot of schools in my time and sometimes you walk into a school, it just has a smell. And it's a good smell sometimes and not sometimes. And I can tell you that when I walk into spring schools, it's just wonderful. Thank you to the custodians.
Thank you, Dr. Jensen. So for our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Academics and School Leadership, Dr. Craig Ware. And we'd like to thank you for all your hard work this evening in delivering those campus improvement plans. We did that first tonight. So our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovation and Student Services, Dr. Matthew Parasaw.
Thank you, President Durant. Good evening, members of the board, our senior leadership team, and those in our audience today. The first item that I have can be found on page 62 of your packet. The Board has challenged us to keep finding innovative ways to celebrate our staff and our teachers. And several of the resolutions tonight were toward that goal. This is an additional memorandum of understanding so that we can also expand on that celebration of our teachers. As part of the Houston, Houston Loves Teachers Campaign, that is part of the 2024 College Football Playoff National Championship Foundation, we've been provided the opportunity to have a mural developed within our district, created in partnership with a local artist, a well-known local artist, actually, Amy Malkin, who goes all over the world and creates art. Her, her passion, what she says, kind of like her mantra, is that her mission is to, to identify, to beautify spaces. Her job is to market our brand and her purpose is to inspire people. Our strategic plan really spoke to her. She lives close to us and she's very excited about being able to create this mural that represents spring and our goals and also to celebrate our teachers. And she will work with Westfield High School students and several teachers at Westfield High School with Hope Preston, one of the art teachers there. She will lead the work with the students. And so we've identified a space, the goal was to find a space where it would have high traffic. It would be something seen by our teachers, but also by our community. And so we selected the, the Family and Community Engagement Center on Ella, actually the entrance to that center to be the place where the mural will be displayed. And actually, I can pull it up and show you so you have a visual of that once. So right upon the entry, when you walk into the Family and Community Engagement Center, there's a place where there's a bench there currently. The design will incorporate that entire wall and spread out into the ceiling area. The design will be done in partnership with students. As they talk about the spring community and what does it mean, I'm really with a focus on equity and bringing into that the, the impact that education has as that great changer. And also celebrating our teachers because every profession that exists is because of a teacher. Someone taught someone to be able to do that profession. And so the, the background. And so the background will be Houston Loves Teachers.
Yeah, thank you for the picture because I was really trying to figure out where this was going to go.
That's great. That is high traffic. We've had a lot of success in what face is offering to our community. You can go up there any night and it's packed. And so we're excited about that. That's a good spot for it. Thank you.
My next item can be found on page 88. And this is a renewal of our partnership that Dr. Jensen spoke about earlier with Lone Star College. And this partnership is specifically tied to our Early College Academy. And this is hard, me and Ms. Guidry were speaking earlier. And it has been five years already that Early College has been there at the Lone Star Campus. And it's been 15 years that the partnership has existed between Lone Star and Spring in building that Early College program, 13 years specifically tied to Early College and two years on the advance. So Ms. Guidry is here. If you could stand and be recognized for all your work and building on that relationship.
I remember when we first talked about it and it was just a thought, you know? And just 15 years, my gosh, amazing, great work. Thank you.
And just think about how many associate's degrees have been generated through that partnership.
I think the other thing is this is our award-winning campus. The stability of the leadership and staff on that campus, I think, is noteworthy. I remember when Ms. Guidry got promoted to that job. So I'm starting to get like Justine where I've been on the board long enough to have seen that. But I really appreciate the years of service and the stability you've brought to that campus. Kids that were there when I first got here, who are freshmen, have gone on to college. And now I'm hearing stories that you just told where they're coming back. I think it's important that our kids can come back to their school and there be a face, a recognizable face on the campus. My daughter's going through her senior year now. And so at the presentation I was at before I got here today, they talked about doing the senior walk. And so my, my child has been at Meyer Elementary School and there are still teachers on that campus that were there when she was there. And I, I think that's going to be a big key for our campus improvement, that we're able to provide that stability and keep our people here with us. So again, thank you, Ms. Guidry. I see Ms. Walker back there. Same to you.
My next item can be found on page 100. This is also a renewal. This is a partnership with Texas Agrolife with part of A&amp;M and also the Prairie View A&amp;M campus. What it does is it allows for students to engage in 4H, which is showing animals. What it, we have the students, about 12 to 15 of them, that do utilize this from elementary through middle and another roughly around six students last year that participated in high school. So while we have FFA, that is tied directly to a pathway in agriculture. And so this allows for students to show animals. And if they're not, maybe they're in another pathway and they want to continue that, doing that. And so it allows that opportunity. And this is also a long-term partnership that has been in existence since the early 2000s.
I was just going to ask a question because in the past, we had a problem with the students having unexcused absences when they were showing their animals. But it looks like this is a way to document and get that credit. So.
That is correct, Dr. Jensen. This will allow them to go and show just as if it was a school-sponsored event. And there's a great sponsors partnered with that A&amp;M that are assigned to our students.
A&amp;M and Prairie View support. I'd like to recognize both Trustee Newhouse and Trustee McDaniel, who are participating virtually this evening.
I think it's Longview that has extended their ag program to include some of their kids getting certified.
Culinary arts. And it is Longview. And it's an awesome program.
The kids are, when you dress the animal or like, like the kids are being trained as butchers. And it's, I believe it's a CTE pathway for them. And so I just wanted to put that out there and say it here that if we're doing that and we're sending kids to Prairie View and to Texas A&amp;M and kids are doing it in terms of our CCMR potential, this is something like to put that thought in your head, Dr. Parasol.
And, and it is, it is an option in our CTE pathway. It's something that we're not currently doing. However, it's, it is something that we know that there are some districts that do engage in that. And so we always utilize that student voice and like, what are you interested in learning and doing? And also utilizing our CTE Advisory Board. But it's something we can definitely look at. It's what, what, you know, what cost would that take to bring in that equipment? And be able to offer that for the student experience.
So just like spring Early College, that conversation started in this room.
Yes, it did.
15 years ago. And so like, this is how that happened. So I just wanted to put that out.
We planted the seed. We'll, we'll definitely look into that and see what that would take and what our interests is.
We were looking at Victory at the time. That was the only one they had in the area. And spring from there.
Let's keep our minds open because sometimes it's the kind of thing like with the auto. I don't want to call it maintenance because it's beyond that, that we actually use somebody else's facility for that. Because I would assume that if you're going to be butchering and dressing meat, that you're going to really have all kinds of inspections. And it might be more useful to piggyback off of some professionals.
But we did see a presentation at a conference and it was Longview. And they included 4H with culinary art. And it was very interesting. And they had some really great outcomes in how the students that participated in those programs scores and excelled in their achievement. Your next item, that was your final item.
That was my final.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Parasol. Our next item, I'd like to recognize our General Counsel, Jeremy Binkley.
Good evening. So we have a few board policy updates to go through tonight. And if you want to start on page 110, these are the legal updates from Tasby Policy Update 121. Just a short reminder, the legal updates, they're not approved by the Board. They are, they're provided in the policy documents as a convenience to ensure that relevant statutes, case law, and administrative decisions are available with the related board policies. These updates come primarily as a result of updates to the Texas Government Code and Texas Administrative Code that were based on legislative changes from the 2021 legislative session. These are not yet updates based on the 2023 legislative session. We will see those updates as part of Update 122, which should be a fairly large update packet that I think is going to be coming out in the next month or two, couple of months. And so for the legal updates, we bring those to the attention of the Board. You do have the explanatory notes in your packet. I was going to ask if there are any questions before I take us to the local policy updates.
I do have a question. I don't know if I just never noticed this before, but on page 112, there are several regulations that in the explanation, it says, please advise us if this regulation is obsolete and should be deleted from your localized policy manual or if you have revisions that you wish to submit for editorial review. So are those things where we actually have to do an action?
Those are, so because they're the regulations, those are administrative regulations. And so depending on the, the Board, the local policies that are updated and what the Board approves, administration may need to go back in and review those regulations to determine if any updates are needed based upon the, the local policy update or the legal updates.
So that's something we can just check as we go along.
I didn't hear you.
You will be needing to check those regulations?
Yes, that's something that, that administration will review and check as they go along.
Yeah, that doesn't fall under the governance of the Board. That's usually administration puts those regulations in place to support the local policy.
I certainly understand that, President Durant. What I was not understanding here on the, please advise us if this regulation is obsolete or you want to include it in your localized policy manual. So I just, we'll get legal advice as we go forward.
Tasby won't do that unless somebody from administration tells them to. So it'll just sit there as a regulation, even if it's obsolete, they won't do that edit for you. Somebody has to tell them. That's what that, that's saying. They're saying advise us if you want this out of here.
Yes, I just wanted to know if we needed to make an action here. So anyway, we can discuss that later.
No, no, that's, it is an excellent question. And it's, Tasby puts it in here so that we can, it can be drawn to our attention too. Hey, we're making changes to these. So administration, you may want to check these out as well and let us know if, if maybe it's obsolete, needs to be deleted, or if we need to edit it. And so it's very kind of them to include that in, in the explanatory notes packet. If, are there any other questions on the legal updates? I know it's been a long evening and I want to get you guys through some of these policy updates as well. So if you look at page 120, we start with CKE Local. And this, this is a very easy update. You'll notice they delete the whole policy. And then if you look at page 124, they add it back in. And so basically, we're pulling CKE and we're moving it to CKEA to better align the legal and local policies within the packet. So it's just a wholesale move of that policy language. And I'm doing a quick pause to see if there are any questions. Move on to CLB on page 129. And this adds language to the local policy requiring integrated pest management for district-owned residential property. That is based on some changes to the Administrative Code. The district does not own residential property. So we don't need to worry too much about the integrated pest management. But to make sure that we are in compliance with the law, Tasby is recommending we add this language to our local policy. Do we have any questions? No. If you look at CFR on page 132, there are actually no substantive updates to CFR. The only change here is to include the adopted language at the bottom of the page. The new policy online platform includes an adoption date function. So what I anticipate here is Tasby may have had some updates for, that this was one of the policies they looked at for updates. They did not have any substantive updates for us. But they said, we're going to bring it forward just to include that adopted piece at the bottom. So that's the only change to CFR.
I have CRF.
I must have mis-typed as I was doing it. On my little cheat sheet, it is CRF. Thank you, sir.
They're just updating the date that it was reviewed.
And so it used to just be a date issued, you see down there. They will now have date issued and date adopted. If you look at page 134, it is CVA. I've double-checked. I know I got this one right. This also includes the adopted language. And per Tasby's recent recommendations, it's removing the or designate language after superintendent, as BJA Local authorized the superintendent to delegate responsibilities to other employees of the district as permitted by law. So I'm looking to see if there are any questions. And if not, I will take us to CVB on page 136, which are the exact same changes as CVA. Simply adding that adopted language and removing the or designate. And again, if there are no questions, I will take us to page 138, which is DEA. And they make minor revisions for clarity. If you look on page 139, you will see those. Changing superintendent or designate shall classify to simply the classification of each job title within the compensation plan shall be based on the qualif- et cetera. Looking to see if there are any questions. And if not, we will move to DEC on page 140. And if you look on page 144, this adds language for the required peace officer, mental health leave and quarantine leave. This may feel a little bit like deja vu. We actually have discussed this leave in the past. It was made between the formal Tasby updates. And there was a situation where the policy update got made, sent to be put in policy online. Tasby pulled our current policies to recommend other updates. And they kind of got overlapped. And so the Board approved it. And then the Board approved the next one that came from Tasby that, that, that language had been left out of. And so this is putting that back in.
I was still stuck on the previous one.
I'm so sorry. We can go back.
So for paid administration, it's now saying, instead of the supervisor to designate, it's saying the classification of each job title within the compensation pay in the compensation plan shall be based on the qualifications. I'm sorry. It's the second, the next paragraph, annual salary, where my question lies. So it says the district shall pay employees over 12 months, equal or semi-monthly installments. Regardless of the number of months employed during the school year, salary employees hired during the school year shall be paid in accordance with administrative regulations as opposed to the compensation plan. I, I, I'd like more clarity around that. Why aren't we using the compensation plan that the Board approves?
I was going to ask the same question.
I don't support this unless I'm not understanding.
Well, let us do some research.
Is that a Tasby change?
That is, that, these are all Tasby changes. None of these are local changes.
Good evening again, trustees. My reading of, of that paragraph is that it's, it's, it's how we, how we, the, the method of paying. So it's just talking about the 12-month installments. It's about the installment payment. And not that we will change their compensation. It's not, it's not, it's not about their, the pay that they're going to receive and how their pay is calculated. But it's just the, the regulation as far as paying them over the 12-month installments via regulation. And because the plan deals with how we compensate them and how we calculate their salaries.
It's almost like, I think what they're saying is administrative regulations. So depending on how a school, what's it called? How, how a school handles the compensation. So they, one school might call it a compensation plan, another school might call it something else. Because when I read it for the third time, that's kind of how I'm reading it. But I would still like some clarity as well.
This is just the first reading. Can the Governance Committee give us a little more details? Thank you, Dr. King.
Yes, so we will make sure to, to research that again. And we will also reach back out to Tasby, if you'll make a note, to get a better explanation. Because I'm also looking at their explanatory notes and I'm not particularly loving the explanation of the explanatory notes either. So we'll make sure we get that, we'll get it back to governance and we'll bring it back to the Board.
Thank you.
Were there any other questions on DEA? I don't want to jump ahead of you guys.
No, you're trying to get us out of here. I appreciate it. Keep going.
I did mention DEC. I know some of you are still looking at DEA. DEC simply re-adds the language for the required peace officer, mental health leave and quarantine leave. And that specific language is on page 144. And this is language that is required by state law that we include in our leave policies.
Okay, so this is where people put their, put days in the bank.
No, this is specifically, it's mental health leave for peace officers and quarantine leave for peace officers. And this really came out of some of the issues that, that came up with COVID. And where you had peace officers who may have been on duty or called to assist in other locales, then get quarantined and stuck in a hotel room because they weren't allowed to leave and they were having to pay for it out of pocket. And so this created, this created a protection for peace officers. And any, any law enforcement agency at this point is required to have these policies under state law.
Thank you.
So if we go to page 149, that is FD Local. It makes some minor revisions for clarity and flexibility to the district. And specifically on page 152, it makes revisions to align with the Administrative Code changes that regard awarding credit to students who are homeless or in substitute care. regard awarding credit to students who are homeless or in substitute care. And I, I believe we already do this. It, it just requires that we assess the students' records to ensure credit, including proportionate credit is awarded appropriately for all subjects and courses. And that again is for students who are in homeless or substitute care. This is something where we already do as a district. We need to make sure our students receive appropriate credit. And it, but it adds that language as required by the administrative code. We make sure all of our students receive the appropriate credit.
So we went past page, are you on 150 or you're on 152? The first form of proof of residency. Okay.
And then our last policy is on page 153. It is FFI. This adds language to comply with TEA's minimum standards for bullying prevention. The language added is on page, first on page 154, identifying the minimum standards and requiring that the superintendent shall develop administrative procedures to ensure that minimum standards for bullying prevention are implemented. And then on page 155, ensuring that those, that the superintendent periodically monitor the reported counts of bullying incidents. And that declines in the count may represent not only improvements in the campus culture due to bullying declines or declines in the campus culture because of a decline in openness to report incidents. So essentially it requires that we, we implement a monitoring standard and then monitor and consider whether or not any declines are due to an improvement or a decline in campus culture. Does that make sense?
It does.
That whole provision is confusing and like worded awkward. I don't, I'm not sure what it's trying. I don't see why it's necessary to add the second part of it. I can also, as you read this, what is it charging you with do, as you read it?
It, it is, and I know it's written awkward, but I actually like this. Because it's, it's going to, which we already do. But what's really important is now it's written. We need to be able to monitor the bullying. And, and I think you heard Ramonda, Ms. Olaleyi, trying to learn how to pronounce her name. How they were talking about triangulating the data with the cell curriculum and what was the impact on the discipline. And so what this is asking us to do is for us to have this monitoring system, which we do. We're tracking all the reports of bullying. And then for us to be able, the way I understood it, is for us to be able to go back and determine is the bullying incidents going down because of the implementation of, in this case, our, our curriculum? Or is it going down because we're not reporting it? And so we want, and that gets to the culture and the openness of it. And that's one of the pieces that I know Dr. Parasaw and Dr. Gueyad are working very closely in. Number one, our bullying reports are very active. I know Chief is here. We've got the, the hot, it's not hot, hot line. No, it's, what is it called? Anonymous reporting plus the, what is it? The anonymous reporting so the student can report, plus we've got the bullying button as a result of David's loss. We've got two ways. And we get those bullying reports, students submitted, parents submitted. We track those numbers and then the principals follow up with it. And what we are charged to do, what I understand is to be charged to do is, are we making any impact with, you know, the curriculum that we're implementing or the discipline that we are assigning to that situation? And if it's getting better, we need to determine, is it getting better because of the strategies that we're implementing, the processes? Or is it getting better because we're underreporting, right? So it's hard, it's going to be hard to track the second part. But I think it's very important for us to be able to analyze that data, just like Ms. Olaleyi was talking about, what we do on a monthly basis.
I think the problem is, what you said makes sense. They tried to squeeze that into a paragraph. Whenever I read these, I always try to consider the counterfactual or what non-compliance looks like. And I can't tell what non-compliance looks like, reading this statement. But I think your explanation clarifies it.
And that's what we're working on. I don't know if we need to accept this or we could rewrite it, but I know that's what Chief Gueyad and Chief Parasaw are working on and which is really important. You know, are our strategies working and is, and if it looks like it's working, we got to go a little bit deeper and determine, is it working because the strategies are working or because they're not reporting it? And it's going to be hard.
Yeah, and this, this language is, so this, this is based on TEA's adopted minimum standards for bullying prevention. And I've just pulled that up. This language is directly out of their document, which does also read a little bit weird. And at the risk of going over time here, I, I will share this real quick. And if you look down here under C, I've got everybody's picture in my way. Hold on. It does include monitor the reported counts of bullying incidents and, and that declines in the count of bullying incidents may represent not only improvements in the campus culture because bullying declines, but also declines in the campus culture because of a decline in openness to report incidents. I anticipate, you know, Tasby took the, the conservative approach and going ahead and quoting TEA's language exactly. Oh, your mic's off.
I guess all of that is important. It's just hard to wordsmith it into a nice little provision in a policy manual, so.
And from a data perspective, what we've done, what we've identified for that triangulation of data is to utilize those, those trackers that we already have identifying the bullying incidents, but also our survey that we send out in the spring semester, this covers school safety. There are several questions in there regarding bullying. So if you saw a decrease in incidents of bullying reported, but an increase in the bullying in that survey, that would tell us that there is a lack of alignment that we need to then look at. Are we, are we marketing and helping students understand how they can report bullying? Because if you're increasing in your campus culture survey and, and the implications of bullying and what students feel, then that, that goes in contrast to the, the decrease in the incidents.
I just don't think there's a way to say that in a single long run-on sentence.
Know your numbers. Know your numbers and know why they're going down.
If there are no other questions, that is the last policy update we have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Venkman.
For clarity, may I, may I ask very quickly, I believe it was,
Page 139.
Page 139. Is the board requesting that we leave that off for first reading right now? Or does the board want to approve first reading while the governance committee goes ahead and reviews it for additional changes for second reading?
We'll approve it on Tuesday.
That's what I meant. Can we, can we include that one as part of the consent agenda for first reading?
Yes, I mean, okay, wait a minute.
When does governance meet again?
The day before the meeting?
I would say we should hold off.
Then hold off.
Yeah.
Oh, and we can change it. You're right. You're right. We can go.
That's why I said, okay, because it was first reading and just, so I have a consensus or the consensus is here tonight? All right.
Thank you, trustees.
We can move forward. Okay. All right, our next item, I'd like to recognize our chief financial officer, Anne Westbrooks.
Thank you, President Durant. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Hina Hosa. The first item begins tonight on page 157. And it is related to the fund balance for 2022, 2023. So our team, the financial services team, has gone through the audit process with our external auditors for the fiscal year ended June 30th of 2023. And we are now about to begin preparing the annual comprehensive financial report, which will come to the board for review and approval at the November board meeting. And as part of our annual financial report, I'm seeking the board's approval this evening to make a change to the portion of the district's fund balance that has been committed by the board, by the board. So our fund balance, as you recall, is similar to what's typically referred to as a rainy day fund. That's our fund as our revenues and expenditures are completed for the year. If our revenues exceed our expenditures, we add to our fund balance. If our expenditures exceed our revenues, we are using our fund balance. So our fund balance as of June 30th of 2022 was $112.5 million. And so the fund balance is broken into four components for the general fund. And for clarity, we're specifically talking about the fund balance in general fund, which is the district's general operating budget. It's broken into four components. Non-spendable, which is things such as inventory. Assigned, which is based on policy and based on the laws surrounding the fund balance. Assigned fund balance can be assigned by either the chief financial officer and/or the superintendent of the district. And so what our district has done historically is we assign a portion of our fund balance that we say is set aside to ensure the district remains fiscally sound and can oversee certain catastrophes such as the pandemic or cash flow issues, things of that nature. Then there's unassigned, which just means there's no restrictions whatsoever. And then the fourth, which is what we'll discuss this evening, is the committed fund balance. And per policy, per law, the fund balance can only be committed by action taken by the Board of Trustees. In June of 2019, our Board of Trustees voted at the recommendation of administration to commit $5 million of the district's fund balance to go towards strategic compensation. And specifically the spring rewards program. So that was June of 2019, pre-pandemic. And since then, the district has seen a decline in enrollment. We're dealing with low average daily attendance, which we know and has a significant impact on the district's revenues that come in. And of course, we know that we're also grappling with a budget deficit. But also since then, the teacher incentive allotment, which we refer to as the TIA, has been put into place and the district is now, we've just completed the first year of the large payout. We paid out $4.5 million for the teacher incentive allotment that's provided through the Texas Legislature. And as you know, can, teachers can earn up to $32,000 based on their designation and based on the campus that they work at. So given that, with the challenges that we have now financially and the mechanism that we have to fund the teacher incentive allotment through TA, which is a way to reward our teachers. The recommendation this evening is that we remove that commitment of $5 million for strategic compensation and move forward only utilizing the teacher incentive allotment that is funded through the Texas Education Agency for our highly effective teachers.
Okay, so talk to me a little bit more. I'm struggling because our legislators have not, and I know we have a special session. I don't see teacher compensation being addressed.
So the, the teacher incentive allotment is something that the legislative legislators have actually committed to. And they committed to including those funds over the, this last session. They actually increased the amount of funds that were available for the teacher incentive allotment. So that has been something that has been fully funded through the legislature.
Fully funded through the legislation by their criteria.
Yes.
That, that, that's the caveat for me.
So you're proposing eliminating spring rewards?
Proposing that spring rewards is only made up of the teacher incentive allotment, which is funded through TA.
Ms. Westbrooks, I just want to make a real quick point of clarification. While the state funds TIA, the teacher incentive allotment, we, Spring ISD gets, we get to create the criteria. It's not, it's not, they don't tell us who gets paid. We in Spring or the committee, there were several committees, because I know we just submitted a revision. And Dr. King, you may want to talk to it, but we create the, the qualifications for the teachers. And so the first payout, we had several teachers that earned $32,000, right? There's several teachers earned.
Over $20,000. I believe our highest in Spring ISD was $29,000. That was earned by one individual teacher. And so yes, through the local designation system, Spring ISD gets to write our parameters for this, the teacher incentive allotment and how it's, it's paid out here in Spring.
Did those same teachers qualify for spring rewards?
I believe more teachers qualified through TIA than through the spring rewards teacher effectiveness incentive that we have.
What I'm getting to is, is it an either or, or is it an and both? Is it possible for a teacher to be awarded the TIA award and spring rewards?
Depends on how our, I'm hearing, I'm not sure who's saying yes, but depending on how we, we write it, yes. What we're saying here this evening is that in our funding environment, the funding that is through Spring's budget environment, we do not have the funding to support an additional spring rewards program above and beyond that of the teacher incentive allotment. And so it was never actually built into our budget, which is why we had a portion of our fund balance committed for that, for that purpose. And now our fund balance is being used to help us in, in other ways. So to answer your question as to whether or not we had teachers that received the teacher effect, effectiveness that was under spring rewards and the TIA, likely, highly likely, yes. But what we're recommending this evening is that we only have one. And that's the teacher incentive allotment that's funded through TA's budget, not Spring ISD's.
So among my concerns about this particular action is, I, I always thought of the spring rewards as a comparative or competitive advantage with the districts that surround us. We're always looking at each other to see who's going to pay $61,000 and who's going to pay $61,001. And spring rewards I saw is a way for our highest performing teachers to decide they wanted to stay with us. And so the, the way I conceptualize this is, I, we do have to account for our lost enrollment. And we do have to make a change to our spending. I don't want to do that at the expense of our best teachers who remain loyal to us.
One point of clarification I want to make here is it's not at the expense of the teachers who remain loyal to us, because they'll still have the ability to earn a significant amount of funds, just like what was paid out in July. The difference is, is that we're doing it on TA's dollar and not on Spring ISD's dollar. So to Dr. Hina Hosa's point, Spring ISD designed the, the incentive allotment, designed the designations, designed the criteria. And so the teachers are still able to earn up to $32,000, depending on which campus they're on. It's just not coming out of Spring ISD's budget. It's coming out of TA's budget. And, and that's the purpose of those funds.
But that same teacher can go across the road to Umbel and they have TIA funding too. Or they can go down to Aldine and they have TIA funding too. What they don't have in Umbel or Aldine is spring rewards. And so again, I understand the need to adjust our budget because of the situation we're in, but I don't want to do, again, I want to keep any competitive advantage we have in terms of retaining our people. We're doing all the work to professionally develop them. And I, I, so while we were in Dallas, another key thing that I saw in districts that are high performing is their teachers have that five, 10, 15-year tenure. And they're keeping their principals, right? There was, I think it was Crowley ISD had zero turnover of their principals. So anything that we can do, offer our principals, offer our teachers to keep them in our buildings, I want to keep that competitive advantage if we can.
And I, to, to. And I, to, to go to your last portion of that sentence, when you say if we can, we cannot afford it. And so if, if the comment is if we can, from a financial standpoint, I would, standpoint, I would say we cannot because we cannot afford it.
And I, if I, if I made this as I said, I think the affording part comes from having a reoccurring expense out of fund balance for strategic compensation. And so it, it wasn't built into the general fund budget. It was, it was, and so it's not something that's sustainable in the way that was set up in two thousand and nineteen.
So I made a recommendation that we do pay performance. We put together committees, uh, Dr. Laquita Carter headed them up. I participated in those committees and what came from that was Springway Rewards. We, as a board, took a vote to put that five million dollars committed funds in our fund balance to continue to, um, provide that incentive for our teachers as a way to Dr. Adams, Trustee Adams' point is to be more competitive. And keeping and growing our teachers and making sure that we retain, retain teachers. And I, I, I understand that the teacher incentive allotment, uh, from the state is funded and supported across all districts, but that is something that differentiates us. Um, that's something that is a competitive advantage. I realize that we are faced, I don't know, I, I don't know if this percentages, percentages have changed since two thousand and eleven. I think it was recommended that our fund balance be like a thirteen percent. We dropped way down to nine. I know we're at a spending cliff with ESER. I get where we are, but impacting opportunities for teachers to be incentivized is not what I want to do. I'm, I'm, I'm not comfortable with moving forward with removing that committed funds.
I feel like the House made a miracle here that they're going to pay what we were going to go into debt over. That, I mean, uh, it's not reasonable to, uh, reward a teacher sixty thousand dollars extra, is it? I mean, they're going to, uh, that top teacher was getting, uh, twenty-nine thousand extra dollars. I, I, that's just not.
In the TIA program, Debbie, or in?
No, I'm saying, you apparently are arguing. You're apparently arguing for, because we're already going to, going to get that teacher incentive allotment. And you, you're arguing on us go, using our fund balance to double that amount.
Is that what our Spring Rewards, I seem to recall it.
Not necessarily to, to double it, but you're adding, to Dr. Jensen's point, you're adding on top of those funds that are already being paid through the teacher incentive allotment.
Huge amounts of money. But it's not adding double amount of money.
On teacher retention, um, it's not always pay. Sometimes you give those top performing teachers more of a say in, uh, things that matter to them around their school. I, I, I can tell you that from research, it's not always pay. So, you know, I think it's just, uh, this is manna from heaven to have the House actually start paying these things that we thought were important. And don't discount, we had a heck of a time that first year with our poor HR trying to cope with how much each teacher was going to get because it was, your school was high performing, uh, you were high performing, you know, there were different, um, things. And remember, we got into kind of a mess there. Well, I guarantee you that there's going to be school districts who haven't been doing this, who think they're just going to go blissfully in and reward high performing teachers and they're going to have to have a year of adjustment too. So, you know, I feel like we've, uh, done the hard part and are figured out what personnel. I know we got another vote coming up here about the full-time equivalence, but that, uh, we've been through and we've got the experience now and that we can actually administer this well, this money, this teacher incentive allotment. And let's call it anything we want. Call it the Springway TIA or whatever you want to call it.
How much was the typical Spring Rewards allotment to a teacher? What was it?
The last one was fifteen hundred, three thousand and five thousand.
That's what I thought. It, it, I mean, it's not a lot. Um, and then did, were we spending through the entire, like that, are we doing that annually? We're doing it annually. How much of that five million dollars?
The first payout actually happened while we had ESER funds. And so that was the first year that we had payout because we, the Spring Rewards program had a little bit of a challenge getting off the ground. And so we committed the funds in two thousand and nineteen. The first, so we had a couple of years without, um, accountability, without test scores. And so the first year that we had the payout just happened to be during the pandemic when we had ESER funds. And so the purpose of bringing it forward now to Dr. King's point is it's not sustainable and we simply can't afford to do that in addition to, um, what we're trying to do right now. So our fund balance is, it's being challenged. We're going to hit and use our fund balance in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year because we had a budgeted deficit and because, as we've discussed many times around, uh, this, this table, the health plan is operating at a deficit as well. So those are operating deficits. And so this would be a, a by choice deficit to go into fund balance even further. And so from a financial standpoint, it's not affordable, it's not sustainable for us. But the good thing is, is that there is another mechanism to achieve the exact same thing without having to utilize the district's already limited resources in order to do so.
Can we get some data around supporting this percentages of teachers that, um, the teacher allotment, what the average payouts were, what the criteria was, what we did with the, um, I mean, we're being, we're being asked to make a decision. I don't see any data.
The teacher incentive allotment is, is fully detailed out on the Spring Rewards.
And the Spring Rewards. I'd like to see what percentages of, what percentage of the teachers received what? What were the dollars amount paid? How many were received payments through both? How many are we eliminating by taking this away? Um, to me, it gives an extra incentive for a teacher that maybe didn't qualify for the teacher incentive allotment. We spent a lot of time around our own criteria for our own program and, and, and how are we eliminating those opportunities?
I, I mean, I would wonder if, if there's a teacher in one of our buildings that is really high performing. And so they qualified for TIA and they perennial, since we started doing Spring Rewards, they've been qualified. That's why I asked if there was, if it was possible to do both. And so are we saying that that teacher will still get their TIA bonus, but will not get Spring Rewards? Like, I would like to avoid that, um, because then we're on a level field or even slightly below some of our competitors around here. And I am willing to fight for our best teach, for our top performing, high student outcome teachers. Like, I, I think we got to do what we can in terms of pay. Now, like they, like, like Jensen says, there are other factors, right? But like, you know, taking hundreds of dollars out of a paycheck isn't where I want to start.
I think what we heard here is that we're not changing our Springway thing. We just have a different funding source. We don't have to go into debt to do it. We have a funding source and we can still do Springway. Call it Springway. Is that?
Is that right?
And, and I, I want to, um, I want to make two points. And this is very difficult, right? As you're talking about, and, and when you look across the board, it seems that we are taking money away from teachers. And that's not the case. I want to reassure, um, everyone that we create our TIA incentive program, which is there are districts around us that are choosing not to use TIA and not to do an incentive program. Because, and, and some of our principals will talk to you about this, it does create a lot of competition and divisiveness. Because instead of working as a team to raise the scores, you may have us as fourth grade teachers and I may be the reading teacher. You may be the math teacher, right? But we're all working with the same kids, but the scores are coming in for math. So only one teacher on the team gets the rewards, right? So many districts around us are not using this. But the districts that are using it, of course, are meeting their specific needs. When we designed our program and we had hundreds of meetings, this TIA program, our teachers got to design the program. And so when you come up with up to thirty-two thousand dollars, that's the limit that we put in there. We created it, our teachers created it. So it is having a performance pay, but not using our money. It's using the state's money. At this point, the teachers are being rewarded that are high performing. We're not taking any money away from them. It is using a different budget. And we have to think very seriously about this right now because our fund balance this year will be hit. We will be using our fund balance to make it through this year. And then we have to look at next year because we still have a twenty-five million dollar shortfall that that's also going to hit our fund balance because ESER is going away. And so as we think about, do we want to continue incentivizing teachers? Absolutely. Do we want to take any money away from the teachers? Absolutely not. All we are asking is that we remove this committed amount and that we transfer this money to what the state is offering. If you heard the commissioner talk on the last day or on Saturday, he, did you hear how he, of course, we're not getting additional funding for teacher pay raises, but what he encouraged us to use is the state funding. He talked about how we can increase teacher salary using this TIA money. And actually, the state legislative legislatures just added more money to it. And that's incentivizing because they know that's the only way that we can support our teachers is through this money that's been put aside. And what he is saying is, you know, we're not going to give you money to give teacher across the board, but we are going to give you money to reward those high performing teachers. And so all we are asking is your permission to uncommit this money so that we have it available as we have to dip into this fund balance this year and next year and that we continue to use the state money to incentivize our teachers. Um, it's just a transfer of the money. And I'll tell you, this program, it wasn't budgeted. I mean, it, it is not in our budget for this year. It is taking it straight out of our fund balance. I, I'm not sure if that's making sense, but it is.
Okay, will, will there be a teacher under Springway Rewards that has gotten a fifteen hundred dollar payout for the last couple of years? And because of this action, they'll get nothing next year?
We've only done the teacher effectiveness payout one time. And so the cross-reference, um, I, I'm always hesitant to make a statement without the data in front of me, which is why when you ask if you had teachers that had both, someone said yes. I didn't say yes because I prefer to check it and, and double check and ensure that that's the case. We have all the data. We have the data that makes up the entire four million dollars of what was paid out through TIA. We have the data and we can, we can correlate and see the overlap between the two and see if there was a teacher who may have qualified for one, but not the other. Um, so absolutely, the data is readily available.
To make a decision.
I guess the other thing that's a little bit jarring is we didn't reduce this budget line item. We just eliminated it and so.
So it's not a budget item? It's, it's, um, using fund balance, which means it was, it was never budgeted. And that was something I tried to make abundantly clear throughout the whole process. Um, when we were committing it to begin with, it was just, we would utilize fund balance in order to, to pay for it. And so the, what I'm trying to be very clear about is we're in the, the, the landscape that we're in right now is that locally, the funding is truly not available. And that, that makes the decisions that we're making as we go through the budget cuts that much more that we have, we have to deal with. Um, but absolutely, we'll pull all the data and make sure that we get that brought forward so that you can make an informed decision.
Thank you. And to Dr. Hinahos's point about the competitive advantage, uh, the number of districts participating in teacher incentive allotment of the thousand plus school districts in Texas, three hundred and seventy-eight, uh, districts have either, are either uh, part of the program or they have an application in pro, in process. So that leaves a vast majority of the school districts in Texas as not participants. And so that we still are able to maintain a competitive advantage and to recruit teachers to Spring because we do offer the teacher incentive allotment.
And to Dr. Hinahos's point earlier, the way Spring's plan is written, it is to make as many teachers eligible for it as we possibly can while still making sure that it is aimed towards highly effective teachers. And that is something that we absolutely have not seen with our fellow districts. Some districts have extremely targeted TIA plans where it's only a certain feeder pattern that qualify for it. Whereas in Spring, it's, it's pretty open. And with the next, the latest iteration that we did, it expanded it even more. So we feel as though it's been written in such a way that it does provide as much opportunity as possible for our teachers that are highly effective to receive those funds. And in my opinion, the beauty of it is that we're able to do that without utilizing Spring's funds. We're able to do that through funds from the state level.
So, so the way I'm understanding this, so we chose the cap, is that correct?
The cap is actually through the, the teacher incentive allotment and it's based on criteria of, um, the campus itself and the at-risk student population, the demographics of the campus itself. And the maximum through the teacher incentive allotment is thirty-two thousand dollars. I know when our payout, the highest amount that Spring paid out based on our campuses and, um, the amounts that were available was twenty-nine thousand.
Okay, so there is, but there is a, a cap, there is a limit to how much per teacher you can pay out through TIA program.
Yes, that each designation has a range and the maximum for the highest designation, which is master's level, is thirty-two thousand. That's at the state level. Each one of our campuses has a, a maximum amount based on that campus and that campus's, um, demographics.
So we could theoretically, if we have lower maximums that we're offering right now, we could create an alternative that would almost replace the extra that we're paying now through the, the Spring payout as well or no?
I don't think so because the, the percentages, the payout amounts are set based on the designation and the campus itself. What our ability is, is to determine how the teachers qualify for the funds. Not necessarily whether or not they could get more. It's how they qualify under Spring ISD's local designation system.
And to echo an earlier point, we've expanded the number of teachers who do qualify. So like, for example, some teachers might, last year might have only been eligible for Spring Rewards. But now this year we have added, um, we, we, we've added science at the fifth and eighth grade level. We've added social studies at the eighth grade level. And we've also added at the high school level, Algebra One, I believe. And so, but we have added additional subjects where last year those teachers were only, uh, eligible for Spring Rewards. Now they're eligible for up to thirty-two thousand dollars based on their campus.
So the alternative then would be to Trustee Adams' point, if we didn't just completely drop the, drop the five million, could there be a cut to say half of the amount? Is that what you're, what you're getting at?
So I, I think I've gotten past that part. So my main focus is, uh, doing what we can do to retain our strongest teachers. Like the focus, like Ken Williams said, focus on the talent. Uh, so I don't, like, I'm not especially interested in giving bonuses to every teacher in Spring. I really do want to focus on our strongest teachers, the teachers that are getting the best outcomes for students. And so if, it, it, it sounds like, I'm, I'm trying to frame this in the way I've understood finance in the district. So, um, we would still fund our Spring Rewards. It was just the funding is provided by the state, not by our, our, our board approved committed funds.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I wanted to answer President Durant's question about, let's say, a teacher.
And I wanted to answer President Durant's question about, let's say, a teacher earned fifteen hundred dollars extra money. Can you guarantee that he or she will earn that the next year? I don't think you can guarantee that anyway because a teacher may be very effective one year in one subject, may go to another subject and not be effective, or perhaps they're having a terrible year for some reason. And they, they don't get those kinds of student scores. So this is year to year effective.
I can appreciate that, but I don't want them not to receive it because of a change that we made. I understand that they could have changed core, different subject. They're extenuating circumstances year to year, I understand that. I don't want it to be because the board made a decision that took it from them.
Doesn't it sound like it's expanding? Doesn't it sound like it's expanding, not contracting?
I'm not sure, I need to see data. It sounds good, and if that's what we're doing, yahoo. But I, I just want to make sure that that's what we're doing. And that we aren't going to, I don't want to come back after we make this vote and then we start hearing from a bunch of teachers and, and that we've impacted it in a way we didn't anticipate or that I wasn't aware. If it is going to impact them, I want to know that in advance and be able to support and justify we made this decision because of X, Y, Z, where Esser's spending cliff. I mean, I, I, I trust Ms. Westbrook's a hundred percent. I just want to make sure that whatever impact we're making, we can be comfortable in doing that. And as a body, support that. And that we aren't overtly making changes that, you know, that we, we may hear some noise about later. I just, and we're always going to hear noise and I can support the noise when I know I did the right thing, okay? And, and so that's all I'm asking. I know you said we had one payout, but part of the Spring Rewards program initially was around attendance. Didn't we, didn't we pay out some incentives around attendance as well? I didn't think that last year was the first, first time we paid out of that program.
It was the first time for the teacher effectiveness. And early on, attendance was one of the components. But we were, I believe we removed the attendance component because during the pandemic, there were so many opportunities that a teacher could have lost the ability to be eligible simply because of COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Trustees, I want to make one correction to the subjects that I mentioned earlier. I mentioned Algebra One at the high school level, that was already included in our original plan. The subjects that were added at the high school level were U.S. history and biology.
We, we are. So the other factor, I attended a lot of sessions that were school districts that had gone from F to A. And so the, the other point of emphasis was early childhood and reading. And I didn't hear you list off primary grades when you were talking about teachers. I mean, the teachers that are teaching our kids to read in the early grades are critical to, in those districts, they were, that was critical to their future success. So they, they made an investment in putting their best folks in first, second, third grade. And, and so in, in a couple of instances, they were seeing the, the payoff for that later on down the line.
And so I will rely on Dr. Hina Hosa for this, just to correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe in, in our previous, in our existing plan, we have the, the primary grade teachers included. The subjects I was listing off are the subjects that we added this year. But I, I believe in our previous application in previous years, those, those primary grade teachers were, were included.
And we tried to do a performance component and, you know, an opportunity for inclusion. So we looked at attendance because we want teachers in the classroom. So it wasn't just that part of the Springway Reward Program. You know, and I don't know if there isn't a, a attendance component in the TIA plan or not. I don't, I just don't know. So I just want to go eyes wide open with whatever decisions.
We will bring the information on our own plan that we did?
Yes, ma'am. Can we get some clarification on, just to make sure that we are providing exactly what is needed? So the, the plan details and then the number of teachers that qualified for TIA, the number of teachers that qualified for the teacher effectiveness? And then we're looking for those, the count of teachers that received both?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to request one more thing. Could you give us two or three examples of a hypothetical teacher? Maybe in elementary, middle and high school? Who, and tell us how their payout would happen?
And the TIA allotment, that's not focused around performance, right? And so part of our Springway Rewards, we were looking for other ways to incentivize teachers as well. So are, are we going to incorporate that into our criteria?
So we took away the attendance because our belief was, you know, if teachers come, the more days they come to school and they're with their children, the better the performance. We had, we did not see that as a factor. So that incentive we have removed and it was, I think, removed after the first or second year. So it is really just on student performance. So any, and we'll bring the details, as Ms. Westbrook says, for both plans. But you'll see it's the assessments that we track, whether it's our MAP, whether it's STAR. And then we added the high schools because at the high schools, there was no way to show growth. Oh, and we focus on growth versus just the achievement. Because our teachers do an amazing job with the growth. And so we figured out a way, Dr. King is here with a lot more experience with other districts and how they, how he's seen it done. And so now we're able to bring in the EOC subjects that in the past were not, you know, able. So we'll bring the specific details for both plans. And then we'll look at how much the teachers were awarded. And we'll look at a hypothetical teacher. There is no cap for the district's amount. So if we set our, our specific standards and all of the eligible teachers need it, the state pays for it. If we make, which we do have high standards. So I'm going to be clear, we have high standards, but also based on where our students are at. So there's no limit from the state as to how much the district can earn. It's only a limit of thirty two thousand dollars per teacher, right? But there's no cap on how much we get from the state. So we'll, we'll bring those details and we'll have them for our Tuesday meeting. If we can get them ahead of time, Ms. Westbrook, and they'll have time to review it prior to the meetings, you can have some quiet time with it.
And don't minimize all the work you've put in and all the discussions you've had and all the inputs you've had to provide this system of compensating teachers who really are very successful, their kids. Because some districts who are going to just try to enter this just don't have that behind them. And it takes time. And then you have to, you know, readjust.
We bought a software, I guess I want to call it, was it from Longview or Lubbock? To help calculate this?
Uh huh, uh huh, uh huh.
And was that for the TIA?
It's required.
It was fifteen thousand, I think we paid. Are we still utilizing that?
Oh, no, the one through Lubbock is about a hundred and sixty five thousand. And it's, it's actually funded through the TIA program.
Rember, okay.
You may be thinking of the Batel project.
Is that what I'm thinking of?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And, and Dr. King, teachers can, and I want you to help me clarify this because teachers can also qualify by seeking the national certification. And it's not on performance. If they just secure, you want to expand on that?
Yes, yes, teachers can earn at the recognized level by, by, by obtaining National Board Teacher Certification. And so that's available again to all teachers as well. And so teachers who have been nationally board certified or who are, and so that also allows us to attract high quality candidates from other states whoever obtained that because Texas is a little late to that initiative and to that effort. And so we, it allows us as well to, I believe it's five thousand dollars at the recognized level for having National Board Certification.
We've had, we have a couple that we've paid out. And one was thirteen thousand and one was seventy five hundred. So they're pretty decent amounts. And that was before we even had the local designation. It was simply based on those designations. Yes.
Are those teachers getting the, the outcomes?
That I'm not sure.
I mean, does, does nationally board certified equal good outcomes?
And that part, I'm not sure. We were actually just given the names from TEA and given the amounts that we had to pay them. So I don't think we tracked any data. It was simply based on that designation.
Just don't smirk too much, Mr. Adams, because my older daughter has been working on that certification and it's not trivial, let me tell you.
Next item, Mrs. Westbrook.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is a request to the board related to the addition of two full-time equivalent, two FTE positions, one in payroll and one in human resources. And so the background on this relates to actually what our board president alluded to earlier in the evening. And that was the number of new hires and the number of turnovers in positions that we've had over the last couple of years. And so very generously, the Board of Trustees approved for HR to have three additional FTEs and for payroll to have three additional FTEs for a total of six to help get through the summer months with the new hires. And so summer of 2022, we hired over eleven hundred new employees to Spring ISD. And so because of that, we saw considerable challenges in our payroll processing and our new hire processing. And so with those six additional staff members that we were allotted, at no time were we ever fully staffed with those six positions. But they were there and they were available. And the ones that we were able to hire were instrumental in ensuring that we had a successful summer payroll. Where this year, we still hired over seven hundred new hires, less than last year, but still considerably more than a typical summer hiring. So in collaboration with human resources and financial services, looking at our processes, looking at where we are, our request to the board is that we're allowed to add one of each, one in payroll and one in human resources, permanent those additional FTEs to help ensure that we can accurately and timely continue to process payroll in this new environment of considerable amounts of new hires, turnover, leaves and all the challenges that come along with that.
And I would like to comment that we did have a couple of internal audits done with Patricia Rios. We've worked in the audit committee. I want to commend Ms. Westbrook's and the work she's done with Dr. King in coming forward and making a recommendation that they truly feel that this will get them staffed to a point where we can feel comfortable and that we're operating effectively. And so I just want to thank their partnership. And the audit committee has looked at, looked at this and supports this recommendation. Trustee Correa serves on that committee with me. Don't know if you want to make any comments. You're good, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
There are no additional questions. Then our next item is our very long, very expensive list of taxpayer refunds that begins on page one sixty.
You can go to your last item?
Okay, and then the last item is our monthly report of cooperative purchases that exceed fifty thousand dollars. And that report begins on page one sixty eight.
I did want to ask what the cooperative TIPS is, TIPS?
What? As in what it stands for?
Yes, and.
The inter-local purchasing system is TIPS. That's, that's the acronym, what it stands for.
It seemed to be very techie, what you're getting these for. Also, the GIS system, geographical informational system. That seems, with my little experience with GIS systems, that seems very affordable. And you're looking at changing student populations, residences?
That's actually our, our demographics contract. When Rocky usually comes to us in the spring to give us the demographics report. He uses GIS as a part of that.
Well, I, I bet he has some ideas of other ways you could be using that. Because when you start overlaying, you know, information on top of information geographically, sometimes some patterns emerge that might be kind of interesting that might affect transportation routes and all kinds of things.
Dr. Justin, which item are you speaking to?
Pardon? Oh, it's under the procurement on page one sixty eight at the very bottom of the general funds.
Thank you.
It's the geographical informational systems. I did appreciate how you have all these nice separations. But I was kind of interested that one of these was still from the two thousand sixteen bond on page one seventy one?
Yes, we do still have some residual funds that are left. It's dwindling quite a bit, but we do have some.
Yeah, I didn't know we had anything left there.
I also was going to comment that I like how it's broken down by funding sources.
Thank Dr. Hina Hosa for that.
I have a question, it's kind of a broad question. Do we have any sort of a budget, budgetary variance report? Like our estimated spending versus actual spending?
Yes, so on our monthly financial report, that's included in the board update, that's where you can see the running total of where we are budgeted versus how we're trending. And then the third page of that report is a, not necessarily budget to actual variance, but year-over-year variance that's included there. So that's, that's how we look at our trend of budget versus actual throughout the years through that monthly financial report.
So would there be value in doing some sort of a monthly? I mean, I know this would be more work for you, but to help us kind of start to tease out maybe some, some spending trends in either different departments or different campuses? You know, looking at it at a more granular level than just kind of the year-over-year?
And that is our report that we use for that purpose internally is we run to see where we are. So if we're fifty percent of the year, if we've got high flyers that are at seventy five percent of the year, we have those discussions with our departments and our campuses. So that monthly report and that just how we're trending in comparison to budget tends to be our analysis that we use on a month-to-month basis. And then, of course, always run in some analytics. Is there something in particular that you wanted to see at the board level that would, other than the monthly financial report?
No, it's just kind of a general, just, you know.
Just a general thought as we're dwindling in our funds and trying to figure out, you know, any areas that we can pick up.
I had a question about the, on page one seventy, the school bus transportation smart tag program?
Sure, that, that is our student ridership accountability program. We mentioned maybe briefly when we were talking about safety and security in our last.
Does that still have the, the app on my phone for the last one?
This is a completely different app.
This is that, right?
You're going to be very happy.
I hope so.
Yes, sir.
This is the replacement system, right?
Yes.
I told Dr. Hina Hosa you were guessing. He's going to be. He's gonna be very happy now, right? Okay. Thank you.
Along those lines, did we update our page? You know, it was referencing all of the, where it talks about the ZPass and and the old software and.
We, I need to go double-check on that. You pointed that out last time.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one dot zero seven one, five five one dot zero seven two, five five one dot zero seven four, five five one dot zero seven six, and five five one dot oh eight two one. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now nine forty-two PM. We will now reconvene the work session of the Board of Trustees. The time is now ten twenty-eight PM. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the recommendation of the superintendent as presented in closed session to employ Jason Davila and Ni莫 Lim in the position of Assistant Superintendent in accord- in accordance with board policy DC local.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Correa. My food. That the board approved the recommendation of the superintendent as presented in closed session to employ Jason Davila and Normal Lim in the position of Assistant Superintendents in accordance with board policy DC local. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Oh, me too. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I motion we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Correa and seconded by trustee Jensen that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Tonight's meeting adjourns at ten thirty PM.